Here we go.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Today is April 4th, 2022. It's 8:00 PM. I call this meeting to order virtually. Madam clerk, would you please read the statement of compliance into the record?
A quick notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and the purpose of this meeting through a legal notice published in the record posted on the Borough website and on the bulletin board.
Thank you very much. Kevin Roll call, please.
Mayor Grenjak.
Here.
Councilwoman Katrubis.
Here.
Councilmember Pharaoh.
Yeah.
Councilmember Park. Councilmember Park, Councilmember Di Gregorio.
Here.
Councilmember Luciano.
I'm here.
And Attorney Metch.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just by way of update, we had nine COVID quarantine cases last week. The three or four weeks before, we had zero or one each week. And so there was a little bit a little bit of a spike last week, but no no, no, no serious illnesses to report other than just positive test results. And I just want to take a moment also to just reiterate what our police department has been telling everyone through their electronic sign boards, which is that there are, we're actually leaving one pandemic and going into another pandemic. And that pandemic that we're entering is that of car thefts. And we are seeing in Englewood Cliffs and in the neighboring towns, just an amazing amount in a bad way of car thefts. And a lot of times it's cars that are unlocked, fobs left in cars, garage door openers left in cars. You need to, as residents, you need to protect yourselves also because you can't expect our legislature or governor to protect you. They've made you all unsafe. They've passed bail reform, and I urge everyone to call State Senator Johnson, Assembly Members, Park, and Hader, Governor Murphy's office, and tell them to reform bail reform so that you don't have to worry about your property being stolen and worse. So that's the message tonight. Could I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
The mayor, before we go to close, can I be recognized for a point of order, please?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mensch, I have a question for you. On September 13th, we passed a resolution to only have meetings held in public. We've never taken any action on meetings going forward again to be in Zoom, and all of a sudden we're back now to having regular meetings in Zoom. And I'd like to know why this is being permitted, since the council hasn't moved any action at all to go back to Zoom meetings. If you could please let me know what that, why we're permitting this to happen?
For, well, as an aside, first of all, the council itself governs its own, its own meetings. You should differentiate as a starting point between special meetings, which are called either by the mayor or by a majority of the council members. I don't believe that that resolution from September 13th would be binding on special meetings called by the mayor, because they're exactly that, special meetings. Similarly, if there are special meetings called by a majority of the council, I think the meeting format would be by the by the majority of every councils calling it. With regard to the regular meetings, you know, we did go back in person for a certain time period. And then I think when the Omicron surge came back, Englewood Cliffs, like some municipalities resumed virtual. But at the end of the day, councilman, to get to bottom line of your question, if the majority of the council wishes to go back in person, it's the majority of the council which is going to be able for the regular meetings. It's the majority of the councils is going to be able to direct that. It's going forward.
So just that I'm not trying to be argumentative, but last year's resolution is not still in effect, even though that's the resolution that we passed?
Yeah. So first of all, I actually don't think it is because it was a resolution governing last year's meetings. But you know, besides that fact, at the end of the day, any resolution can be changed by a majority of the governing body. So if majority of the governing body wishes to have their meetings virtual, then a majority of the governing body can change the meeting format, just like right now, if the majority of the, of the council wishes to make sure that future meetings are held, especially if future regular meetings are held in person. You know, the majority of the council can direct the clerk to make sure the meeting notices are noticed appropriately and in person going forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Luciano made the comment that this may not be a public meeting. This is a public meeting. You did.
I didn't say.
You did.
I apologize, but.
Let me, I didn't interrupt you, sir.
I apologize.
Not interrupt you.
I apologize.
Okay, can you just stop? So this is a public meeting. It's being conducted virtually via the Zoom application. You have a motion to go into closed session?
If I may, I'd like to respond that I did not say it wasn't a public meeting. My point being is that we took a motion. We made a resolution, and that's why I was just inquiring about it. I know this is a public meeting, so I don't want that to be misleading to the public. I'm well aware that this is a public meeting. Thank you for recognizing me and allowing me to speak.
That was asked and answered twice already. Kevin, motion to go into closed session?
I would like to say one thing very quickly.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
We're going to close session. We will be back in about half an hour and.
You should say. He's not going to recognize us all.
Anybody opposed to go into closed session?
Yes, I oppose.
I would like.
We're still going. Okay, Laura, can you put the public into a waiting room, please? And then.
I would like the council to.
That's not how we, that's, that's not Robert's rules, Mr. Di Gregorio. I suggest that perhaps in the interim between now and we come back to public, you read Robert's rules.
I had my hand up.
That's not how you, that's not Robert's rules.
Consider having the meeting.
Laura, please put us into.
I am.
Thank you.
We'll make the motion when we come back.
Sure.
Well, you see, our buddy Tim just jumps into right away to.
Close session. You have a motion to come out of closed session, please?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Kevin, motion to open to the public?
Make the motion.
Well, Mr. Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
No. Is there anything that you need to add to the agenda before we open to the public?
Yes, we had a resolution to approve payment of the attorney's fees for Don Doherty, as it relates, as ordered by the court in McMorris, Englewood Cliffs, Dr. Number 6702-19.
Okay, and what is the amount?
Yeah, pull up right now. Hold on. It's a total amount of fees is $2,453.28.
Okay.
Mr. Mensch, do we not owe, do we not owe the portion of that?
Let the chair recognize you, Mr. Luciano.
Well, Mr. Chair, will you recognize me, please? Because I have a question directly related to that before we go to open.
Yes.
Mr. Mensch, is that only the fees part, but didn't they, didn't he say that we didn't pay the original amount too? Or did we pay that?
That's already been authorized for payment. Payment, as I understand, has not yet been issued.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't missing it and telling, you know what I mean, that it wasn't the 3,000 and the 2,000. I just want to make sure we're clear to the public.
Does anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand virtually or physically with your camera on? If you're on a telephone, just get our attention. Yes.
O'Shea.
Mary O'Shea.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I would like to address some comments to Mr. Katrubis or Councilman Katrubis, excuse me. The last meeting, Councilman Katrubis was very, very disrespectful and intimidating to Councilman Pharaoh. And, you know, just because you don't like the way somebody votes, you cannot attack them. Every, every individual that's up there, you have six, or you don't have six, you should have six, but you chose not to have six. You have five people up there, and everybody's entitled to vote their conscience, vote what they want. They're elected by the public to vote what they feel is right. And you have no right, Councilman Katrubis, to intimidate and threaten Councilman Pharaoh for his vote. He's allowed to vote the way he wants, just like Mr. Di Gregorio can vote the way he wants, Mr. Luciano and Mr. Park. Everybody has the right to their own vote. You vote the way you want, and then you, and not, and not to intimidate and threaten other council peoples because you disagree with them. And Mr. Munch, is there any type of, Mr. Mensch, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. Mr. Mensch, is there any type of clarity that you can bring to this situation when, when a council person is disparaging another council person over their vote and threatening them?
As I say, whatever discipline a council is able to take is set forth in Robert's rules. But I guess council members are all elected by the public. There's not, it's not like a private organization where you can, you know, expel a member for you know, conduct that you don't like, or, you know, monetarily sanction them in some way. The bylaws of the Englewood Council, Englewood Cliffs Council indicate that you, all members should use decorum and act appropriately. And.
That seems to be very lacking with this configuration. I really think that the deputy administrator, deputy clerk has the mute button. And when somebody starts attacking another council member, they should be muted. They should be shut down. Okay, and that's wrong. It shouldn't happen. And Mr. Katrubis has been doing it repeatedly, and it's wrong. Okay, and on the same vein, I would like to also take issue with Mr. Luciano. When he threatened the deputy clerk not to mute him, or he would introduce a resolution to have her terminated, that's harassment. That's totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable. You cannot threaten an employee as a council person. And Laura could sue the town for those actions. That's harassment. Just, that's my two cents. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard?
Motion to close the meeting to the public.
Yes, I don't see anyone, do you?
You have a motion in a second, there.
Ms. Borchers, did you get the motion?
Yes.
And a second?
I had to get the second.
I'll second. I can second, I can.
All in favor? Okay, anyone opposed? Right, so we are now closed to the public. Next on the agenda.
Wait, can we make a motion to, can we make motions for, I just want to make sure we miss our window. Mario.
You could, I recognize you if you have a motion, if it's on the agenda, otherwise, if you make a motion, then we have to open back to the public, I think. But go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have GMA proceed with our two candidates, as we discussed.
Sorry, is this motion 20? Which resolution are you speaking to?
I don't think that there's a resolution.
Okay. All right, so there's a, there's a motion to have, to authorize GMA to speak to candidates for the borough administrator position?
Yep.
Is that correct? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, before we have a vote, though, I think we need to open to the public because we've promised the public that we would open whenever there's something introduced. So Kevin, a motion to open to the public for purposes of discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? Are we going to do this with everyone? Because it seems like we're being selective on the ones that we are going to open, because there was a few meetings where there was a request to reopen after there was stuff added to the, that you kind of refused to reopen the meeting. So I'm just wondering, is this what we're going to do? And I don't have a problem with it. I just, this is going to be something that we're going to do going forward, because I fully.
Just to be clear, I, I, as mayor, don't have authority to open or close.
In the meeting, though, and you don't.
The council, if the council makes a motion to open, then we open. If they don't, then we can't. But we promised the public that whenever something was introduced that wasn't initially on the agenda, and we had just had public discussion, it wasn't mentioned. So I, I'm saying that we should open.
I agree with you.
So rather than, than, you know, try to create, you know, whatever you're trying to do, why don't you just make a motion to open to the public for purposes of the motion that was just moved and seconded by Mr. Katrubis, so that we could hear from the public if they wish to be heard?
I hope this will be a standard practice.
Yeah, I think we.
I'm still waiting for a motion, guys.
No, you have a motion in a second. I think it was Councilman Katrubis and Councilman Park.
No, no, but we're waiting for a motion to open to the public.
I think you have it from.
I'll make the motion.
Councilman Katrubis and Councilman Park.
No, that wasn't the motion. The motion was to, to basically authorize the consultant to speak to the candidates.
Just to make it clear, I make the motion.
I second it.
Okay, there we go.
All in favor of opening to public for purposes of the added motion?
Yes.
Okay, anyone opposed? I think I had enough people say yes. No one opposed. So if you're in the public and you wish to be heard regarding the motion that was just made by Mr. Katrubis and seconded by Mr. Park to authorize our HR consultant to speak with candidates for the position of Borough Administrator, please raise your hand. I see one hand up, Mrs. O'Shea.
Mary O'Shea, I'm sorry to be the only one that's speaking, but.
Whoever just said that, mute yourself. Laura, mute the public, please.
I, I'm glad to see that you are, as a, as a body, opening to the public when there is a new item added to the agenda. But in the same instance, this is a special meeting, and you cannot add items to the agenda that were not advertised. You can do that at a regular meeting, but you cannot do it at a special meeting. Only the items that were advertised for the meeting can be added to the agenda.
So that was always my understanding also, Mrs. O'Shea. We're now, we're now in the world of Mensch law, and he says we can do it. He's the borough attorney, so we're going to rely on him. And if the wheels come off because his advice was wrong, then, then he's in the jackpot. So.
Mr. Mensch, are you saying that you can add an item to a special meeting that was not advertised? Is that your opinion?
So, O'Shea, this, and I don't mean to speak for Mr. Mensch, but.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you don't have the floor. You don't have the floor. You don't have the floor. Mr. Mensch, go ahead. Mr. Man.
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Can, you can add, you can add an item to a special agenda that was not advertised.
We're relying on a council's opinion at the moment.
Interesting. Okay, I was always, always led to be, believe that that was not the case.
Right, okay.
Add to emergency meetings, Mrs. O'Shea.
Well, any, any special meeting or emergency meeting?
Emergency. Emergency is a meeting on less than 48 hours' notice. There's a lot of rules with emergency meetings. That cannot add an agenda item to, other than what's exactly advertised. You can't even discuss anything else. Special meetings are like any other meeting. They just are called off of the schedule that was published at the beginning of January.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else in the public on this item? No, Kevin, a motion to close to the public?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, so we had a motion in a second, and now we'll have a discussion of the council. Does anybody wish to say anything about the motion that's pending? Okay, Kevin, roll call, please, or vote?
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
No.
Councilman Di Gregorio?
Yes.
Councilman Luciano?
Can I just get clarification on, from Councilman Katrubis, on what his motion is?
For GMA to proceed with the candidates we discussed to, for everything that we discussed this evening. If they'll take us at this moment. I don't even know if they'll take us.
Okay, abstain.
Council President Katrubis.
I'm sorry, Laura, can you just mute iPhone? It seems to not be identified, but certainly chatty. Or if it happens again, just put him in a waiting room.
Okay. Council President Katrubis?
Yes.
May it passes.
Can I get clarification on that vote?
We have three I's, one A, and one abstain.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Oh, I'd like to make another motion, Mario, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to reinstate the ad hoc committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I, again, I need to open to the public, since this isn't on the agenda.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor of opening to the public to discuss the motion that's pending, which is to reinstate the ad hoc committee on, is that on affordable housing?
Yeah.
That's one.
The one that we previously stated except this one with members, Mr. Park, myself, and President Hayman Meta.
Okay, so a three-member ad hoc committee for affordable housing consisting of councilmen Katrubis and Park and resident Haymon Meta. Okay, so Kevin, a motion to open to the public? I'm sorry, I think we just did that, right?
Yes.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, if you're from, if you're in the public and you wish to be heard regarding the pending motion, please raise your hand virtually or get my attention. I see one hand up, Mrs. O'Shea.
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. This, this item keeps reappearing on every, every meeting almost, and nothing changes. And in my opinion, the fact that you have a citizen on the committee, you have lose your confidentiality and everything, communication that Mr. Meta has with any of the attorneys or with any of the council people, then becomes operable. And you, committees should be formed by the council, of the council, not with outside citizens. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, have a motion to close to the public?
Second.
I need a motion first.
I made the motion.
Glenn made the motion, it was muted, though.
Oh, okay, all right. Anyone in favor?
All right.
Okay, so regarding the motion, we had a motion and a second. And is there any discussion? Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Pharaoh?
No.
Councilmember Di Gregorio?
No.
Councilmember Luciano?
No.
Councilmember Katrubis?
Yes.
The motion fails. The item on the agenda, 22-dash, resolution 22-90.
Can I make a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm speaking right now. Let me finish what I'm saying. Then after we're done with this, you could do what you want. Almost do what you want. So 22-90, establishing search committee members. Can somebody explain this motion, Mr. Katrubis? I think you added it.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to be a search committee. At first, it was supposed to be Glenn and I for the administrator position. Glenn doesn't want to do it anymore. Now it's supposed to be David. And that's, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, so it's you and Councilman Di Gregorio on a search committee for purposes of finding a new borough administrator.
My name was brought up, please.
Just by way of background for the public's purposes and information, we, we had an interim borough administrator on a part-time basis from, I think it was beginning of October through March 31. It was a limited engagement, and we are now in April, and the search continues.
Mr. Mayor, can I please make a comment since my name was brought up?
Sure.
Just to, for clarification and to correct the fact, we, we were going to have, we talked about creating a search committee, and Councilman Katrubis and I did spend some time working on it. And for three meetings, two meetings at least, at the end of the meeting, when we were totally dysfunctional, and I wanted to bring up the fact that we needed to create the search committee, the council decided to end the meeting. So after three times doing that, I told Councilman Katrubis that I wanted to have nothing to do with it anymore. So that's the reason why, not that I don't want to be with it anymore. And I think that to create a search committee now, when we're already at the end of the process, it seems a little, a little bit ingenuous. But so I'm going to make a motion to table this, this, this resolution.
And I would second that.
Yeah, before we go on with that, though, I just want to make it clear that that's not exactly what had happened, Glenn. It didn't give me any reason for, you didn't give me.
Mr. Katrubis has a floor, Mr. Stacey. He did not interrupt.
Mr. Mayor, it's a motion to table, and there's a.
Mr. Luciano.
Say that the motion to table is not debatable. So there's no discussion.
Mr. Luciano, you had, it's my privilege to give you the floor. I gave you the floor. I am now given the floor to Mr. Katrubis, and I'm asking you to not interrupt him.
But it's not debatable.
I'm asking you to not interrupt.
Robert's Rules.
I am the chair of the meeting.
It's Robert's Rules of Order, and it's not debatable.
Yeah, so I already had a motion in a second.
Advise the council.
And we're in for discussion, so I don't understand.
You have to stop being disruptive.
I'm not.
You're not using foul language.
Robert's Rules of Order.
We're following Robert's Rules of Order. Mr. Katrubis, you have the floor. If you're interrupted, stop speaking until you could speak unimpeded. Mr. Luciano, I suggest you stop talking.
Mayor, with Robert's Rules of Order, when there's a motion to table, there is a vote on it.
All right, well, we're going to hear from Mr. Katrubis first, and then we'll do that.
Ignore the Robert's Rules of Order.
We're going to do that. You guys ignore them all the time, especially you and your foul mouth.
Follow the law or Robert's.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Katrubis.
So Glenn said that we cut the meeting off three times. That never happened. That's revisionist history. He never gave me a reason for not wanting to be involved. The truth of the matter is, yes, there was dysfunction at the last meeting. There was a motion to, to end the meeting. There was a second. There was a vote. Glenn was upset, and then he, without any rhyme or reason, and I tried to reach out to him multiple times. He didn't want to pursue with the committee and the search committee for the administrator. And I think that it should be also known that there's been a significant amount of time, has been put, effort been put forward to try to bring a solution for the administrator. And he, he, he hasn't been cooperative at all for the past couple of weeks, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, he doesn't do very much anyway. So, okay, so there's a motion to table.
But I follow the law.
With, there's a motion to table, the motion that was made by Mr. Katrubis to appoint a steering committee.
No, table, the motion to table is on the floor.
Yes, I understand. I want to explain to the public what it is that, I want to explain to the public what we're tabling. Will you just stop and let the process work?
I just want to follow the law, sir.
You never do. You never won't. We know.
Only one that's not right now is you, sir.
Ms. Borchers, please do a roll call.
Do I have a second? I didn't get the second, Mayor, for tabling. Was it, okay?
Second, I'm the second.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
The park is the table.
They voted, Mayor.
Just a table.
Table, table, what the?
Abstain.
Councilman Glenn's table, or I just talk you about it?
I thought we voted.
Just a second.
It's a table, the search committee. It's a table, it's a table, the search committee.
Uh, such committee, I thought about, uh, council team, Ketrubus, say, you know, brought in that such committee, that's why I voted yes.
Okay, so this is to not have the vote, which Mr. Luciano introduced to table that.
Oh, then, you know, no, sorry about it.
Okay.
It's alright.
Councilman Diego Goryo?
Yes, please, yes.
Councilman Luciano?
Yes.
Council President Ketrubus?
No, to table.
Matt, it's two, two, and one.
Is that a time, Matt?
It's two to three, it sounds like.
Fails.
Motion, motion fails.
Okay, so that clears the way for the actual motion originally made by Councilman Ketrubus, which was moved and seconded, um, and we need to have a vote now.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Same.
Councilman Diego Goryo?
I don't wish to be on the committee of two, I don't think we should have a committee of two, so I'm gonna abstain on this one. We should have a committee of three.
Yeah, you know, it's really funny, guys, because we've had this committee of two, first it was Glenn and I and you were on board with it, David. Then it was you and I and you were on board with it, David, now all of a sudden, it's, you don't think you should have a committee too. I I I really don't understand, you guys just spend.
We had, we had, if I can speak just for a second, in closed session, we came up, at least I came up with the solution uh that we um do cert, make certain, do certain actions, we could have done them and be done with it now. Um, but there's no compromise, and so, you know, at this point, I I have to abstain, I mean, I could vote no, but I think that, I think we need to have good, honest discussion, we all need to exercise a little bit of flexibility uh to move forward. Um, if we're all a little flexible, I think we can get things.
So just for the record, this is the first time, Mr. Diego Goryo, all night, we've been at this for two and a half hours, that you mentioned that you want to have a committee of three. So, you know, one of the things I always tell everyone is, look, I don't care what your positions are, just be consistent, don't be fluid, okay? Do what's best for the town, do what's best uh for our residents, but don't be fluid, stop playing political games. It's just, it just shines a light on your fluidity, your inconsistency, and your bad faith.
Yeah, I I like to take it a step further, I don't think.
I thought we're in the middle of a vote.
I don't think that this council understands that we're running out of professionals that want to assist us. And it's the behavior of certain council people that are, is making it much worse. Especially witnessing what we just went through in closed session. And if I'm not able to go back to explain to our professionals that uh this council truly wants to start working for the benefit of the public. I'm sorry to say, and I don't know who's on this line or who's listening, but things are gonna, the wheels are gonna start coming off soon and it's gonna start affecting other branches of government. And um I just want everyone to know that I've done the best that to uh bring forward our solutions, so if we're in the middle of a vote, the vote for me is yes.
Any head, Councilman Luciano's?
She didn't call.
Oh, sorry.
Just talking, so, um, but to to clarify one thing that the mayor said, we never had one discussion at all, all night about the search committee. We spent time in closed session talking about the position of the administrator. So to say that we've talked about it for two hours is one hundred percent false. So I think that to have a search committee now, when we're almost at the end of the process, is is, doesn't really seem to make sense to me, that's why I wanted to table it, so I vote no.
I agree.
Two, two, one, Matt. To abstain, two ayes, one nay.
Yep, motion fails.
Alright, next on the agenda is um twenty-two dash ninety-one approves Mr. Dastian's firm to move forward with the interlocutory appeal. Sir Mensch, is there anything else that you need to add or explain?
No, this is, this was done at the emergency meeting, Mr. Dasty uh has filed that appeal, uh, this is just for anybody who uh since there was questions about meetings, this is just about suspenders of reaffirming what was done at the emergency meeting on, yes, it was Thursday of last week.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mensch is, can I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Why don't we wait for discussion, that we just do it once, can I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Have a second? Okay, discussion, go ahead, Mr. Luciano.
Mr. Mensch, are we doing this because um I'm a little confused with a couple of things, is it because that Mr. Dasty possibly filed the appeal the day before the emergency meeting? Or is this really to rat, is this really to just cover our bases or you know, our bases that, the action that was taken at the emergency meeting is really being, that was okay?
Uh, it's B, he filed the appeal Friday, I believe.
Okay, I think one of his things that was dated was from the thirty-first, not the first.
May have had it dated that way, but I have the uh the filing, uh, which was on that Friday. Um, and this is because as we've done before, um, as you all know, Englewood Cliffs is just litigation prone. So anytime there's an opportunity to do a balance suspenders to protect the borough, I consistently recommend doing it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Do we have a vote, please?
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo?
No.
Councilman Luciano?
Mr. Mensch, for clarification, should I? Should I um recuse myself?
Yeah, you should recuse, Councilman.
Thank you, I recuse. I do have to ask Mr. Mensch, I will let you ask him.
Mr. Mensch. Okay, so you have to change, change that to a recusal, then, thank you, Mr. Mensch.
Council President Ketrubus?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, um, next on the agenda is twenty-two dash ninety-two, approved tax appeal settlement. Lot six, block seven, seven hundred nine. And Matt, do you have the alternate beneficial owner of that property?
On the second.
Um, okay, it's um Jose A. that the tres valacios uh two thirty-two Lynn Crest Road, I like to actually go beyond the legal description so that people with a conflict would recognize it. Since none of us know lots and blocks by heart.
We can make sure going forward that we put in the street address and.
It's in the resolution, it just wasn't on the agenda, that's fine. Could I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we vote, please?
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Goryo?
Abstain.
Councilmember Luciano?
Abstain.
Councilmember Ketrubus?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is um motion to authorize a temporary dog park uh to to be configured by our very own uh DPW superintendent and perhaps in conjunction with advice from our borough engineer. Um, there there's been a bit of an issue with dogs running on the athletic fields and uh in an effort to accommodate uh players, coaches, and parents uh and 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 dog owners and their and their dogs. I thought perhaps what we could do while the park renovation plan is being undertaken is that we can actually have a temporary dog park uh at the end of Floyd uh street on the, as you're heading north on the right side, there's a uh there's a patch of woods and perhaps we could put in some temporary fencing, uh, I leave it up to Mr. Neville to determine uh what is best and whether or not to divide that area into two for large dogs and small dogs, although I I've seen small dogs and big dogs playing very well together, um, unfortunately, they were doing it on the athletic field, so we want to get in a better place to do that now. Uh, so that would be the motion to to basically get that done. Um, it's temporary and as you know, the whole park is being rethought uh by a committee, uh, so is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I brought this up on Facebook of several, many months ago, so I'm glad that we're moving and doing something about it.
Well, that's that's nice, David, I'm not your Facebook friend, why don't you bring it up in council meetings like I just did?
Well, I I I actually did. If I'm given an opportunity to talk, um, I could bring up many ideas. But let me just say that um I I, the only concern I have is that we have to be very cognizant of the neighbors. We don't want to cause a neighborhood disturbance, uh, so I think we have to look at the
Okay, yeah.
We have to look at the location and the other thing that we have to do is we have to make sure that the dogs are safe there. Dogs have been killed literally in dog parks, so we have to make every, uh, we have to make it a safe um uh operation. Uh, and uh we have to make sure that the proper signage is there, so we have to be very deliberate, very thorough in how we're going to do this, but I am a hundred percent for it, I think it'll be.
Okay, yeah, let me just add that the Englewood Cliffs has some of the best behaved dogs, except two masters that I recently heard about attacking a little dog. But they're not, that, those dogs are not part of the uh uh the dog park crowd, and I think, you know, the the dog owners are are very responsible in general, so those same dogs have been already playing together, uh, this is just a matter of putting them uh in in temporary space um by Floyd, I I think the uh there there's very little disruption, the people live next to a park, live next to a park, um, and the park was there first. Um, although that's not even an issue, I, here, I'm highly confident that the dogs, the owners, everyone's gonna get along, the residents, the neighbors, everyone's gonna get along very well. If there's any issues, uh, they'll get reported, we'll deal with it. In terms of signage and um, you know, you know, pick up after your dog stuff that the uh, the the health ordinance is still apply. Uh, so everybody has to pick up and I I don't really think it's been a problem, although um you can't pick everything up, of course, so um they, the dogs should get off the athletic field and we do have an ordinance that says they're not allowed to be there, so we're just trying to really uh improve a situation where everybody could have um what they need. So was there any other discussion?
What about insurance, what about insurance and liability, what are we doing about that? I think we have to be thorough about that, we can't just put up a dog park. Uh, we have to be careful, it's irresponsible.
There, there, yes, I know, David, you're you're the responsible minded reason amongst all of us, none of us would ever think of it unless you did, so look, you know, it's a park and as a municipality, we have insurance, uh, and uh, you know, if if somebody has an aggressive dog, there's gonna be an element of self policing, as there always is, right? I mean, if your dog is aggressive, you don't bring it to the dog park, my dog is aggressive, I don't bring my dog to the dog park. Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, I wish I could, I can't, and I know I can't, but um.
What about ours, what about, you know, I think that.
It's the same park hours, like everything else, David, nothing changes, the hours are, the hours are posted, David, everything is there. Uh, go ahead, consult your notes and then we'll answer all your questions.
Well, you're not letting him speak, I can answer your questions, but can I ask a question, please?
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to know.
I thought you wanted David to speak.
Well, I didn't interrupt my way for him to finish, unlike you, Mayor.
Alright, go ahead, I'm answering his questions, this should not take hours, go ahead.
Well, compared to as well, um, is that property owned by the borough? Or is that property belong to the adjacent property owner that we leased from? And do we need to find out about if we're able to put that park there, that area is a heavily wooded park. Are we permitted to take the trees down or do you plan on building?
We're not taking trees down. No, no one said anything about taking trees down, you said you're taking trees down, I didn't say.
I never said I was taking trees down, I asked a question because I said, made a statement that that area is a very, if you listen carefully, maybe you'll understand what I'm saying. But the that area is a heavily wooded area and my question was is will we be taking down, not that I didn't say we were, and is, do you know, does anybody know, does our attorney know? If that property, because like the tennis courts and the batting cages technically don't belong to us.
We have the right to use that.
That's all.
We have the right to use that area, no trees are coming down, we wouldn't do that. We we may clear some underbrush and and make it more friendly for dogs to run around and um um, I'm not sure if they put down some wood chips or mulch or something else, but um I I'm not a dog park expert, so I I think Mr. Mensch and Mr. Neville will will put their heads together, figure out something that works. Uh, and and we'll go from there.
Mr. Mensch, do you know if that um, that lease that we have with, um, I believe it might be CNBC, the owner of that property, that we leased that property from avails us to create a park on that property? Do you know that?
I know.
Okay, Mayor, you know that for a fact that we're able to do that in our lease?
I don't know, I just heard me ask Mr. Mensch to make sure that we could do everything that we intended to, so, subject to Mr. Mensch's approval, subject to Mr. Neville's plan, uh, the board, um, the council here uh can approve it or disapprove it. I I brought it forward because that's what residents have asked me to do and I'm happy to do that. If you want to find ways to not do it, if you want to find ways to not do it, just keep it up. Um, but I I'm trying to find ways to do it and that's the only property uh that we have short of the circle at Cathy Terrace and a a few other small areas. That that are not um conducive, I believe that property is leased but from CNBC by us, by the town and I I believe we have the right to use it as a park as we wish, so.
You weren't sure, but now you know, okay, thank you.
Well, no, I think, I believe it's the the case, because that's part of the buffer zone, which, by the way, I told all the well, I asked Kathy Scankarella and the building department, building maintenance people to tell all the commercial owners of property with buffer zones to get out there and and clean up all the litter off their buffer zones um immediately before it gets grown over, but we, it looks terrible, right, so is discussion over on this, we can have a vote?
All the questions.
Councilmember, have a question, Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Goryo?
Yes, and if we needed someone to consult with, there's one up in Brewster, New York, who knows a lot about dog parks, yes.
Councilmember Luciano?
Yeah, under the condition that the mayor mentioned that we uh ensure that we are that pending Mr. Mensch's approval of the lease and finding out that we are able to put it there. So although, yes, is pending that uh stipulation.
Councilmember Ketrubus?
Yes. Great, we actually did something good for the town tonight, uh, so I thank you and I know the dog owners thank you as well. Mr. Mensch, can you just get in touch with Mr. Neville and and confirm that we can do this?
I will copy the of the lease and we'll make sure.
Alright, thank you, have a motion.
May I be recognized for moments?
Yeah, hold on, Mr. Ketrubus.
Resolution approving, this should be a resolution authorizing payment of attorney's fees as ordered by the court last Friday um for um Mr. Doherty in connection with his motion seeking payment of um from the old.
I make the motion.
Bill, the the amount of two thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty.
Motion and second, motion from Glenn, second from David.
Any discussion? Alright, can I vote?
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Goryo?
Yes.
Councilmember Luciano?
Yes.
Councilmember Ketrubus?
Yes.
Any passes?
Thank you, I just want to point out um to the public that although that was not in the that resolution was not in the written agenda, it was announced prior to the public portion, so we've already opened to the public on that. Can I motion to adjourn, please?
I'd like to be recognized, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Ketrubus.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to address some statements about Miss O'Shea said before. I, first and foremost, I don't appreciate her, she's she's the president of the Englewood Cliffs Republican Organization, I don't appreciate her comments and her revisionist history. Mr. Pharaoh was not present at the last meeting, I've never threatened anybody. If anybody wants to speak to me about something, they're more than welcome to do so. I've had conversations with Mr. Pharaoh since uh any meeting that he he addressed. The public would, should know that there was, we have had uh five meetings in the past two weeks. The public should know that there was, we have had five meetings in the past two weeks. And Mr. Pharaoh has only attended two of them. So I'm not quite sure. Ms. O'Shea seems to me is having a history of just coming up with things. And if people don't like that I am direct and to the point, then it's it's because I have the public's interest at heart. And frankly, I'm the one, I'm the one that believes that does, does his homework and is prepared when it comes to these things. And if other people feel that they are intimidated, it's probably because they may or may not be abreast of the situation. I'd also like to point out that Mr. Pharaoh did not make any comment tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to be recognized, please.
So in that instance, Mr. Katrubes, commenting on Mr. Pharaoh's comments or noncomments tonight was not the issue, right? The issue was Mrs. O'Shea, so.
That's true, that is true, but he could have said something as well.
Okay.
He wasn't at the la, he wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm not sure what she's talking about.
Okay. I have a order to Mr. Diego Goryo. I recognize you, go ahead.
Very quick comment and I'd like to very excited that we have a men's basketball team. Also, a big thanks to Mr. Stango. We've been getting these opportunities for us to get in shape. And the wonderful ceremony that was at the upper school for the the eighth graders and the seventh, the, the team for the children in town. It's really nice to see this recreation department come, come alive. And so thank you very much, Mr. Stango and all of the other coaches that have been participating in this.
Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized, please?
Yes.
A few things. First, I, I know Councilman Katrubes and I haven't been agreeing on many things here recently, but I would like to say I totally agree that and, and totally disagree with Ms. O'Shea. I didn't ever hear Councilman Katrubes threatening anybody. I think to bring facts to the table and state it as they are is not a threat. Second thing is, I think our, something needs to be done with our property maintenance. The gas station across the street from the bicycle club has about fifty tires sitting in front of it. And I don't know, it's been there for months and I don't know where our property maintenance man is. We have, I have there's, there is so many vehicles in town that have unregistered not, no license plates even on the vehicle that need to be addressed. I know.
Yeah, there's one on Hollywood, I think, too, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
There's one on Hollywood, I think, without a license.
Well, there's one on Lori, there's one on Jane, they're on the, they're on the Choffee property.
By the way, on the, on the tire issue, did you actually reach out to the property maintenance official?
I did not because it was brought to my attention today to bring it up.
I, I, I know that the political theater is better, but political theater is better, but that's also across from your father-in-law's restaurant, right? So, look, why don't you just call the property maintenance official and ask him to take a look? You know, I don't think the public really cares that, that, you know, you have these issues for your family and for your friends, but, you know, this, we've been at this for three hours, so.
Don't cut me off because you don't like my message, but just to.
No, no, I want, I don't want tires around either, but.
My family, my father-in-law has nothing to do with that restaurant, so you're one hundred percent like you do and lie about everything else. You're one hundred percent incorrect.
Okay.
And if you think that you're correct, I'll challenge you to that, to prove it to the public that the statement that you just made. Because you're so, you're so out in outer space. Whose property it is, the fact doesn't change that there's twenty-five, if not more, tires sitting in front of the business.
So, so my point is, my point is that there's no one in this meeting. There's no one at this meeting or on council that could actually solve that problem. A lucid, reasonable person would just call the property maintenance official like I did regarding the buffer zones and not grandstand about it.
Grandstanding anything, sir. What happened, when I called him, when I got, when I called him, I was called a Guido by him. So, and he told me when I was gonna bring it up with the full mayor and council, he told me he didn't give a shit. So if that's the way that you, that you think I'm gonna call him instead of coming to the.
We could go, we could go back to, we could go back to item eight on the agenda, which we skipped over, which was your foul mouth.
Well, that's not my foul mouth, that's your property maintenance.
Possible for you to express a, is it possible for you to express yourself without going into the gutter?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may please, I'm only, that's not my word.
Take that as a no.
Once my God.
I know, but it's not necessary to go into that vocabulary.
So you're just trying to get me riled up and I wish you would just let me speak. And when you, like, you don't like to be interrupted?
Well, that, that says a lot about your own maturity and professionalism. Express yourself without going into the gutter is more about you than anyone else. Go ahead.
Once again, it's not something that I said. This is something that the property maintenance man said to me.
Really? And what did you say to him?
I asked him to come and show, show me what violations that were actually happening to, to, to the property, my property for one, and my neighbor's property. And he called me that I was a hero because I cut my grass. And then he said he's dealt with people, so that's the issue. The bottom line is you for one that made issues about how people speak to the public and in a derogatory term, calling me a Guido is just as bad as some of the things that you've made issues with.
I'm not condoning that. I'm just saying that, you know, that, that's, that's your issue with the property maintenance official.
No, it should be all of us.
History predicts the future, you're probably pretty nasty to him to, to rile him up like that, so.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, it's my fault. But anyway, once again, there's cars, as you even mentioned on Hollywood. So if you noticed there was one on Hollywood, did you call the property maintenance man? So.
I have been calling for years.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then there's another one that I'd like to say, there's a property on Floyd that has probably filled the property about a hundred and fifty feet wide and about twenty feet tall with dirt that is being trucked here from God only knows where and construction debris being buried on the property.
Did you report that?
Once again, I think that these are issues that our property maintenance man.
Did you report it? But did you report it to him?
Property maintenance man needs to address, I'm pointing out the fact that there's numerous things in our town that are looking horrible that we as a governing body and you as the mayor, the head of the governing body, that a council person because the public is complaining to me, I'm addressing it like I was asked to at a public meeting.
Well, you know what? Maybe you could do this in the future. If you really care about the issue, if you really care about the issue. Really, hold on, if you really care about the issue, you could address it publicly, but you could also address it with the only person in town who has authority to do anything about it, and that's the property maintenance official. I know it's not as glamorous and politically but you know what? Try that, try that sometimes.
Mayor, the property maintenance man is only here for seven hours a week.
He has an email address.
Also addressed it, but you said before you didn't like the email, so when you call him.
That's not true. I never said that.
Mayor, may I please?
Write your email to him and then you can report to us.
Without you interrupting me. Is that possible of you?
It is, but you know what? You're wasting all our time because again, no one here can actually fix your problem.
If I have to get muted because I'm speaking over someone, it should be.
Oh, wait, that brings up another point. Last time you threatened to fire someone.
I have the floor. I would please, I'm praying. What I want to talk about without Mr. Cranjack constantly interrupt.
Before we, before we adjourn, I just want to bring up one more thing. So continue your discussion. I just want, I just want to be recognized before.
All right, I'll hold it, I'll hold that. We may be here another two hours, but Mr. Luciano has a lot of.
Finish his thought, that would be really well, good.
Go ahead, finish, finish somebody's thought, Mr. Luciano.
Just go ahead. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is that I'm glad you think it's funny that you do this, Mr. Mayor, and then you're gonna say that I behave a certain way when your behavior is more abhorrent than mine.
You have property maintenance. You have property maintenance issues. Call the property maintenance official. That's the way it works.
I, but I think if I, let me interject one second. Mr. Luciano has brought up something we should all agree. You're giving him a problem and I think that, okay. Maybe call the property maintenance official, but now that it's brought up, let's do something about it, acknowledge it, say, yes, thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you. Call the property maintenance official and then if it hasn't gotten done, come back to us.
I know, you're the mayor, you're the mayor and you're telling me to call the property maintenance guy.
I am not the landscaper.
Okay, I just, I just think that, you know, if we, if we're going to point something out that's going to make the town better, instead of hassling each other, we should just say, okay.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a three-minute issue, okay?
This is the reason why we'll never come to a consensus, because Mario Cranjack is in charge of the meeting.
Three-minute issue. I mentioned the buffer zone before. Thirty seconds.
So why don't we just make it simple, right? Glenn, why don't you just, you, you had some key points there, like the dirt on Floyd. I don't know about any of these problems. Why don't you just make a motion? We'll just, as a council, we'll direct the clerk and our attorney to address this issue with the, with the property maintenance person. Make it that simple. Is that, is that a problem, Matt? Can we do it that way?
Sure, fine.
Is, would you like to do that? Because I don't know what any of these issues are. Glenn, you want to address them tonight? Make the motion and we'll have them addressed.
To the property maintenance official, you know.
At least then he'll know it's coming from the entire council and he's gotta do something about it.
You could write the email to the official, copy us.
Then here, here's my motion. I make a motion to terminate the property maintenance official.
We're not opening up now.
I don't know if we can do that.
Have a motion in a second. In a second.
Oh, you know what this is about? You want to fire someone because you were rude to them probably and now you. Look, guys, can we have a motion to adjourn? Go ahead.
For, now I make a motion to call the question.
Councilman, if we cannot take action with regard to an employee's status without providing them with a rice notice, an opportunity to be heard and, and the requirements that go through that.
But, Mr. Mensch, I thought we were told that as long as it's done in public, there's no need for a rice notice.
You know, as, as a government employee yourself, you, you should be more respectful of your coworkers, okay?
More respectful of your council members.
You know, it's, that's all you want to do is fire people that you don't like or you perceive don't like you. There's a better way to manage, which is actually bring the problem to their attention so they can do their jobs. And by the way, copy me so I know what's going on and I could follow up as well. As simple as that. No one else has these issues, Glenn. You're the only person with these issues.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned with the whole dumping of the dirt that you said as well.
If there's a legal fill, somebody needs to deal with it and bring it back to the elevation it should be at. Simple as that.
No, I just think instead of hassling and debating and arguing, we just listen and then we take action.
And it's all theater though, so it's all theater. When you have a problem, not when you're trying to create a problem.
I think Councilman Katrubes had something to say.
Yeah, so I, I just want to make sure. I, I feel like there's been significant damage that's been done with our relationship to GMA. And I want to make sure for, for Matt in my resolution was absolutely clear and what I, what the objective is when I approach this man tomorrow. Do you think that I need to reword it, Matt? Because I don't, do you, have I been clear enough?
I, I think, I think your, your that your resolution and the motion was clear based on the, you know, the along with your motion. And then you'll have a conversation with him tomorrow. And depending on what he says, you know, the council may need to take additional action or, or adjust course. But you'll have that conversation with him tomorrow or whenever you speak to him.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Glenn, send, send an email to our property maintenance official, be specific, put the addresses down. The issues, copy me, copy Mr. Katrubes on the email. Thank you.
Is there anything else, David and Glenn, before we close? I don't think Ramon and Mark have anything. Do you have anything, Mark, Ramon, anybody?
No.
I'll save my ideas until next week. And but.
I motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you, Laura.